It is six thirty-one, call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Hutchinson, if you want to go ahead with the roll call, please?
Yep.
Mr. Herron?
Here.
Mr. Swain?
Here.
Merrick Arden?
Here.
Mr. Gasswitz?
Here.
All right, let's move on to approval minutes. I'll start with the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Okay, I'll second.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
I abstain.
Merrick Arden?
Yes.
And Mr. Gasswitz?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission work session for May first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve the May first work session meeting minutes?
Second.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
I abstain.
Merrick Arden?
Yes.
And Mr. Gasswitz?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, communication, planning and zoning, Mr. Hutchinson.
Welcome, everyone. You're probably wondering who these two people are sitting beside me here. So we have two new members for Plain City team. This is Cam, she's our intern from Ohio State. She'll be here this summer to help us in the planning and zoning department. And then we have Colin, who's here, he's our new zoning specialist, full-time. So he just graduated from OSU two weeks ago, so I wanted to give them a warm welcome and glad to have them here, finally get some help, so that's all I have for tonight.
All right.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome.
DZA, expressions?
No meeting, nothing to report.
Good, all right. All right, Merrick Arden?
We have a council meeting coming up Monday, May twenty-second, and tomorrow there is the grand opening for the station, which is the old municipal building uptown. And that's going to be Brick House Blue Cohatch workspace. And then Richwood Coffee is opening up a location at Richwood Bank on Friday at ten a.m. And I think you can get free coffee all day to sample that. So their proceeds go back to nonprofits in the community, so we're excited to have them opening.
All right, moving along. Okay, we'll move into our public comment period, so we do have a hearing for a rezoning. So we'll have a public comment for the rezoning for that one. So if anybody's here for that, we'll wait till we move to that and the new business. Is anyone here to speak just in general for anything else under the public comment? All right, old business, nothing listed on the agenda, so pretty caught up, good. All right, moving on, so new business. The only new business we have for our agenda today is PZ twenty-three dash three zero, US forty-two. It's a rezoning of approximately eleven point six-six acres along the west side of US forty-two, north of Perry Pike, from community district B two to a planned commercial district, PCD. We have the applicant is here as well. So do we want to do the just general information on it, then go with the public comment?
Yeah, so basically we have just over eleven acres here. It is currently both zone B two, it is currently zone commercial, just to make it easier layout. And with the project and the concept and development as a whole, it's easier to do it as a PCD. It just gives a little more flexibility and layout for the site.
Okay.
So and we had this, so this applicant presented this, I think, two months ago, maybe two months ago, to the board, the concept idea for this, for this development.
Okay. Any, is anybody here to speak for the public?
We could, if you want, do you have anything to add, John, or anything new?
You just talked my speech.
Okay. All right, so yeah, if you want to open up to public comment.
Okay, yeah, if you don't have anything, if anybody's here to speak for the public portion of this, feel free.
I have a question, do you want to rezonate from B two to what?
It's PCD.
PCD?
Yeah, it's a planned commercial development.
And I have seen someone who will speak to how that makes a difference.
Yeah, it just allows more flexibility for the layout of lot.
Not which, not which types of?
No, what's permitted there now will be same permitted that's in there with the new zoning. Same, nothing, the uses won't change at all, just it's going to allow more flow inside the development as a whole.
Oh, okay.
So with a B two district, there are certain like setback requirements and different requirements that they have to adhere to. But with a PCD, it offers them a little bit more flexibility. So with some of the things that they want to do with the project, the PCD is kind of the only way, and at least the best way for them to be able to proceed. Where it's zoned currently, they would not be able to proceed with the plans that they've submitted conceptually.
So it makes it less restrictive?
The PCD, I don't know if I would say it's less restrictive, it's just differently restricted. You know, it's, so like when we have, our zoning code is kind of laid out and it tells you item by item what can happen within a district, okay? The planned commercial district that we're talking about lets staff specifically work with the developer to create kind of, I don't know, the guidelines or the criteria within the code. Does that make sense?
For straight zoning, for B two is parcel by parcel, so each parcel is separate. For a development, for a planned development, it's just imagine it as one giant parcel and multiple buildings in that parcel. So with individual parcel, you're, you have individual regulations for that one parcel, but if you do it as one big parcel, it allows you to move plate pieces around a little bit. They're, you know, they're going to be proposing an actual public road that goes down the middle of it. So this stuff would be really hard to do with just straight zoning.
Got you, thank you.
So the map that was up there, I can't read it, I couldn't read it offline, is that just an example of what it might be, or is that exactly what they want, the buildings and the parking lot?
Those are, this is a concept, so it mean it could.
Are we talking retail, is that what we're talking, retail restaurants, or what?
Potentially, yeah, potentially a grocery store was an idea, a daycare, John and Phil, Phil and it, there was a laundromat, then potentially like a restaurant, some retail style buildings. Those would be those type of uses there for that.
Which all of those things are permitted under the B two anyways. It's just the design of the project is, you know, offers more flexibility. And it is just conceptual, so I mean, like this goes through a rezoning, if it's zoned, or if it's voted to be rezoned, they have to come with their, you know, their actual plans, which will have this hearing again and public hearings with council and all of that. So this is just like, it's like not even step one, this is like the pre-step to this.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, being none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this. So, I mean, for this, we've, you know, gone through, I mean, it's, you know, kind of just the recommendations, you know, from a couple of months ago, just no real differences, you said, just, you know, presented here, just allow, make it more custom fit to fit the property and get everything in, you know, nothing, nothing's new added, nothing, you know, business-wise, and it wasn't going to be permitted there, so.
And they're all business, I mean, I know that's the next step of for zoning, but like, those are businesses that we are desperately needing in Plain City with a grocery store and daycare. So with that, I move to approve the rezoning of eleven point six-six acres for PZ dash twenty-three dash three.
I'll second.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Merrick Arden?
Yes.
Mr. Gasswitz?
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our next item, so this is just a, just discussion period, so there's nothing's voting on, nothing's being decided, this is just, just an open discussion, just Virginia Homes for the Beechy Farm Harbor there in here, is same, same meeting, was it two months ago?
Yeah, last, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just coming back, just with updates, just to talk about the project of, obviously we're version one point two, so what changes have been made on that stuff, so I don't know who wants to take the lead.
Want me to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, my name is Charles Rummo with Virginia Homes, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you again, to share this, this mixed-use project with you, Beechy Farms. As I said in the last meeting, and I'll say it again, this is one of, if not the most exciting developments we've, we've ever been a part of, and I say that for a lot of reasons. You know, to be able to work with a property of a family like the Beechys, to produce something that is going to be very meaningful for Plain City, we're going to be able to incorporate four different types of housing with some commercial and retail that obviously is needed, the last project is helping that along the way as well. I think to continue that trend is very important. What I'd like to do is kind of just give you a brief overview of where we are with the project and some of the numbers specifically, and then kind of go down and drill down to some of the comments that we heard last, at the last meeting, and how we've identified those and reworked our plan. I think we heard a lot of great constructive comments at our last meeting, and I think we've done a decent job, a good job of reworking the plan to make sure we identify those concerns. So the Beechy Farms is, again, a mixed-use development, it's a hundred and thirty-eight acres in total. It's bordered on the north side by the Copperfield subdivision, I believe that's the name of that, is that correct? So Copperfield. To the east, we have Darby Field as well as some vacant property. To the south, we also have some vacant property, and along the east border, excuse me, the west border, would be the state Route forty-two. A few of the features here to note, there is a power line running north to south along kind of the eastern boundary of the site, eastern portion of the site. There are a significant amount of trees, kind of the center of the project and kind of along the east side as well. One of the nice parts of this project is we've been able to incorporate almost that entire tree stand within our open space, including many of the specimen type oak trees that are on the property today. So the plan consists of thirteen point six acres of commercial along state Route forty-two, that would be A one, two, three, and four. There are two out parcels as well as some inline commercial and retail. We envision, again, potentially daycare, grocery, drugstores, and some of the out parcels. The inline commercial, we're looking at restaurants and maybe some small businesses as well as some other retail uses. The nice part about this commercial is we want to make this connected to the entire city. We anticipate a bike path along state Route forty-two, the length of the property, a bike path that connects back into our open space, and our hope is that we'd be able to connect that into the Darby Fields Association property and all the way out to Plain City, George'sville Road. Bike path, as you see, meanders to the south from the park, all the way through kind of that, that power line easement, we'd be able to bring that to the south property line in hopes that maybe someday that would connect to Converse Huff. So really, a lot of connectivity here that really makes that commercial work. I think integrating not only this community, but the entire village of Plain City with what we're doing is vitally important to the success of what we're trying to achieve. So beyond the apartments, just moving in, or excuse me, behind the commercial, to the north, we have nine point nine acres of townhomes, that would be C one. To the south of that, we have apartments listed on fourteen point eight acres, that would be B one and B two. Back to the north, we have D one, which would be approximately thirteen acres, that would be an H targeted type product on slab, potentially. And to the south, we have another forty-nine plus or minus acres making up D two and three, which would be more traditional type single-family. So in total, we have seven hundred and eleven units on eighty-six point seven acres, and if you're just calculating that based on the acreage that those units actually sit on, that would make it eight point two units per acre. For me, I look at it as incorporating the parks and the overall project, just taking the commercial out. If you were to do that, we'd have a hundred and twenty-four acres, and that would make up a density of five point seventeen units per acre. Speaking of the open space, the open space is thirty-five point two acres, or roughly twenty-five point three percent of the overall acreage on the property. Again, the importance here is we're protecting and preserving most all of the trees on the site. It's a, the park is centered in the project, so it's kind of fronted on with all the product. Our main boulevard coming in from forty-two dead ends right into it, and we're able to, again, to provide all the connectivity with the past systems. So some of the planned updates from the last meeting, if we go through the list of things that, that we heard, I think the major concern, the number one concern was the northern border of the property and where we're connecting to the Copperfield subdivision. What we've done here is we provided a fifty-foot landscape buffer between the properties. I think this was always our intent, it just was not very well depicted in our original bubble layout. This area, what we would anticipate would be mounds and trees and grasses and significant screening to make sure that that border is, has a proper buffer to make that transition. Second concern we heard was the south, the lots to the south didn't really have any other outlet outside of the main boulevard coming into the project. I think that might have been, you know, a public safety issue, if something were to block that main access, those southern lots wouldn't have a way to get in and out of the property. Along with the fact, I think we showed initially four curb cuts on forty-two, which we wanted to eliminate one of those, so we eliminated that, and we moved one to the south and made that connection all the way back into the southern portion, so that ingress egress would be a part of the, of the project, so we took care of that. One of the comments that was made was regarding the Oak Grove community across the street. That has been zoned and may or may not happen, but there is an intersection there that they have proposed on to state Route forty-two. The concern was making sure that we aligned with that with our main boulevard. We anticipate this to be a signalized intersection, and we wanted to make sure that that all lined up, and we have confirmed with our land planner and our engineer that that will indeed be the case. One of the other concerns we heard was the lot sizes, in our last plan, we showed all the lots being fifty-two feet wide. While the lots in D one are still fifty-two feet wide, we were able to increase the size of all the lots in D one, excuse me, D two and D three to sixty feet. Lastly, I think one of the concerns we heard was regarding the open space, I think in our original plan, we showed about seventeen percent open space. As I mentioned earlier, we're now about twenty-five point three percent open space, so we were able to significantly increase that number. One of the nice things, and nice changes that we made, and we don't have the original plan here, but on the southern portion of the open space, we had lots that were kind of inside the park. In this plan, we removed all of those lots, so it really frames in the open space and lets everybody kind of run onto that space from a development as a whole, so. We do really appreciate the comments that were made, I think this is, those comments have made this plan much better and have enhanced it to where it is today, and I certainly would love to hear more comments tonight and kind of where we stand. I know we're in the process of creating new zoning text and codes and where we all fit in with this, and I think it's important tonight to kind of get an idea of where we stand with, with everything and the changes that have been made.
You said you're at seven hundred and eleven units, as I said?
Correct.
And what were you when you presented your first conceptual?
Seven twenty.
So you lost nine, with the changes you made?
So just looking, just the difference here, so I'm just looking at the difference of the units, so multifamily on the original was three forty, so this one's gone up to three sixty, so additional twenty multifamily units, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. And then the townhomes was ninety-five up to one oh one?
Correct.
Okay, and then sixteen, sixty-one, so basically the same number of those fifty-two foot lots, and then really the big drop was in the, I guess, the larger, going with the larger lots, the single-family homes was probably the, from two twenty-five down to one eighty-nine. So just probably went with just a little bigger lots, and then probably that middle section there, probably is where that difference is, would that be a good guess?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. So the increase of the townhomes and the multifamily, was that just more of a, just design calculation, getting more accurate with numbers, with like how the buildings are going to be, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, it was, because, you know, I'm just talking density numbers just in there, you know, that's a larger jump in, in those two areas from what you originally proposed, so.
Yeah, so as you can see, there is a little more detail as far as how these buildings could lay out and on the site, and with that, that kind of generated those numbers specifically, it kind of worked out with the fact that we're changing a lot sizes and how that all came together and the way the roads, this system was being reworked, especially to the south.
And then the design of the townhomes and multifamily, I guess, any concept of what those are going to be looking like, or where are you?
Yeah, we have some concepts, I apologize for not sharing that with you, but we, along the roadways themselves, there are four apartment buildings to the south and two along the main boulevard, we'd anticipate those being a two-story structure, the others being three-story. The townhomes, I actually have a product that's fully developed that I can show you what that will look like in renderings form, and we can certainly give you plenty of ideas of what the apartments will look like. I think what we talked about last time was keeping the rural farmhouse look intact and fitting with the community, and, you know, we certainly want to work with you all as to what that ends up at the end of the day, but, you know, we want to keep that integrity as part of the project and throughout with the landscape plan that will be part of the overall zoning application that's submitted, so you can see how all that comes together, and we'll provide plenty of examples at that point in time.
What's the parking situation for the townhomes? It doesn't seem to be depicted quite yet.
So we need to have our engineers put that all together, you know, I, I think there's going to be some pushing and pulling, and if we lose some units to make sure the parking is right, then we're going to have to go about doing that and analyzing that in more detail. This is a much bigger step than we had the first time around, but, you know, obviously, when we design these things, parking is vital or else the projects aren't successful.
Right.
You know, it's great to have a bunch of apartment units, but if you can't park there conveniently, then nobody wants to be there, and we're going to make sure that those numbers work out right. And again, if that means losing density, we lose a little density, we want it to be right.
Is that going to be a product you guys develop, or is that something that?
The apartments.
The townhomes, attached, single-family attached?
We are looking at a few sites, it's a newly developed product, but I, yes.
Charles, I got a question, the, for the targeted area and the townhomes, I can't recall, were any of those going to be private streets, or was that decided yet?
So I think the townhomes and the apartments would all be private streets, and everything else would be public.
So B one, B two, and C one?
Correct, and D one, you know, the portion along the main drag certainly would be public if, you know, if something happened inside that was private, that could be.
And you're definitely developing the single-family homes, is that the area?
I'm going to develop whatever we can, but we are, Virginia Homes is not a company that can build everything on this plan, right? So we're going to have to look at a portion of things to sell, of course, so that's part of this process. Whatever it would be is certainly going to be quality in nature, and, you know, we can have those discussions.
Well, I guess maybe to expand on what she's asking, or what my curiosity is, is Virginia Homes, you're a single-family home builder, right? And I think what she was asking is, are you developing, is Virginia Homes going to be the home builder in the D one, D three sections? Those are the single-family residentials.
I would say we would have interest in building some of those lots, we would not build all of them.
So you would sell individual lots?
No, we would, well, we would sell lots to another builder.
What about the commercial? You guys don't do commercial, do you?
So that's another area that we, is up in the air, we, we may or may not be a part of that, we, we built commercial stuff in the past as a, as a company. It just depends on how this all turns out.
But at the end of the day, your logo's in one of the corners of this conceptual plan, right? The Virginia Homes logo, so you're putting your brand and your name?
We are a real estate developer as well as a builder, and we would like to be building certainly the townhomes and a portion of the residential and the rest of it, you know, we don't build apartments. We can certainly be involved in a commercial, that's been a discussion internally, it just depends on how much of this we, we can and will take on.
Derek, have we shared the, I think we talked about it, but the, whatever the Route forty-two corridor plan, has that been shared with?
We've started, have we started traffic studies?
We haven't, we're having those conversations right now.
Not yet, no, we haven't started, we haven't done any traffic studies yet for them.
Well, I was referring to the corridor plan that was put together by ODOT, you know, a few years ago, whenever I was at seventeen.
ODOT is aware of this project, we've, you know, we made aware of all the developments that we have along forty-two, but as far as any updated plans, I haven't seen anything updated. I know they were proposing around about it at Converse Huff in forty-two, and then obviously with development, with what we saw here previously, the Madison Meadows and Maran Reserve, there's going to be improvements, obviously, right there at forty-two and Perry Pike, so it just, it's going to work its way, work its way down.
I just know one of the, one of the big takeaways from that study was the, the number of crew cuts that are within that stretch, you know, stretch of the roadway on forty-two, basically, from, I think they did it from London to Delaware for that matter, but I think just, I just think they need to be aware of it. I don't know that there's any like hard and fast guideline that's set in place by ODOT or restrictions necessarily, but. or restrictions necessarily, but, um, you know, they did the, the study and I just think that the, um, the developer ought to be aware of ODOT's original plans or concerns or, you know, what that study was. And again, I don't know that they can be held to anything, I don't know if there's an actual restriction in place from ODOT, I just. Well, they're, they're proposing three curb cuts. Uh, that there's a curb cut to the north of it and there's another one where the apartments are at to the north on the west side. I mean, they're, they're, we're adding about six curb cuts, um, to what's existing today.
Yep.
And I, I just think that they need to be aware of what that plan is.
That was, I know at the last meeting, we discussed that and that's part of the one, one, four, three, for sure. But I think the traffic study, once, once we get to that stage and the traffic study's done, the limits are gonna be based on design speeds and maximum or minimum lengths between curb cuts.
The distances.
Yeah, the distances between curb cuts, so that will often be how you do that traffic study. I, in general, I think what they showed will probably meet it, I think it's gonna be okay. I mean, it might shift, you know, one way a little bit or the other, but I think three curb cuts along this front edge will meet the requirements.
So our, our full intention is to have a, a full traffic study started in the next few weeks as soon as we can get somebody started, as well as sitting down with ODOT to make sure that we have all these conversations prior to submitting a zoning.
And I think what you guys just said is, I mean, they'll use the traffic studies that incorporates, uh, the, the, the Maran Reserve and Madison Meadows, one, two through ten, whatever we're add on that.
Oh yeah, I mean, ODOT has to approve anything on, along the state routes, so they'll have to.
Just when you, um, when you get your traffic engineer on board, have them submit out the memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go through that process, make sure we know, we have input on what you're studying, so we don't, we don't waste money putting traffic study together and say, well, you need to go through this intersection up here or whatever else.
And, and I don't know how it works with the Oak Grove across the street. I, I mean, I know that's a pretty decent size, you know, coming, you know, would be joining that one intersection.
Two hundred and thirty-five units it says right there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it, cause it's already approved, so I mean, I, I don't know how the traffic studies work for taking account stuff, you know? Obviously that was approved like ten or fifteen years ago, so it's.
We'll, we'll address that through the MOU process and make sure that that's considered as background traffic in this study, that you're accounting for all of that in there. Because obviously if there's, it's not there today, so we're not gonna count it in the traffic counts, but we can account for it in the background traffic.
What's your position? They, they want to do a signalized, um, intersection at that main boulevard, what's our engineer's input on, on that? That being you?
Off, off the cuff.
Yes.
I don't have a concern with it off the cuff. I mean, we'll look at, I mean, we'll look at, there's, there's minimum distances between signals that are allowed, there's minimum distances between unsignalized intersections. And so we'll need to look at all that through the traffic study, but, uh, the next signal, what is the next?
Perry Pike.
Perry Pike. So there, that distance is gonna be met.
No, like, I was saying, kind of, I'm just thinking traffic stuff, so like the north and south of that main boulevard, you know? I mean, I pitched that almost be like a right in, right out only, I mean, I think that'd be tough.
To, to which one?
So you have the middle one which is gonna be signalized?
Yeah.
So the one, you know, north and south, making left turns out of there with those being, I mean, I'm just trying to think of as forty-two gets developed, would those almost just become right in, right outs? I, I mean, I just don't know, you know, you're, I'm just trying to think of ten years plus down the line as forty-two, you know, more developments coming, you know, traffic wise. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to project.
I think that stuff we evaluate through the traffic study. To, to be able to say that right off the cuff again, because we gotta, we gotta look at the study that ODOT did, we have to look at the big picture of the village and what's forty-two gonna look like in twenty years. It might be four lanes.
And at that mo, at that time, we were able to petition ODOT to reduce the speed limit.
I'd like to petition now to reduce the speed limit.
Well, you, you can petition all you want, but until it's annexed into our jurisdiction, it will not happen.
Which, which this, this will be annexed.
But will both sides be annexed? North and south because?
Oak Grove is annexed, so the finish line.
Okay, but, but to the south of that, uh, the unincorporated Karn property on the west side of the road is not in our jurisdiction and about, I don't know, uh, over a forty percent of the, of the northbound lane coming from the south of their property, the Beechey property, is, you know, it's only gonna be incorporated on one side unless the annexation incorporates both sides of the road, which has happened. You know, we, even though the, the, the property on the opposite side wasn't actually annexed or incorporated, we've been able to annex or incorporate both lanes of travel to avoid the things that we're talking about. So I, I don't know where you're at in the annexation process, um, but I, those are definitely concerns because that's been that, the thorn in the side in terms of being able to restrict or regulate the speed, um, because the state sets the speed on, on US and state routes, um, by Ohio revise code. And without it being incorporated in our jurisdiction and it being a municipal, uh, speed limit, with proper traffic study counts and stuff like that, we can't restrict the speed, it has to be that.
So once you have jurisdiction, are you able to control some of those things?
Control it better, yes.
Okay.
Yes. But that's what I'm saying, if, if the southbound lane is fifty-five miles an hour because it's unincorporated and the northbound lane is thirty-five miles an hour, it, it creates issues and, and it, there's safety issues, there, there's just lots of issues. So I mean, it, it's important that both sides get, I mean, if, if we're, if we're able to, we, eh, incorporate or annex, um, both sides of the road. And now the village, Haley, might have some issues with that because we've got road maintenance issues that, you know, come into play from snow removal and all that. All that's a big picture thing, but it's stuff that we've had problems with that need to be considered and thought of.
So there are, um, petitions, we could petition ODOT to change the road and I think if we have half of the road in jurisdiction, I think that, to me, I would think that'd be an easy petition.
It hasn't been, I mean, we, we've got, I mean, if, I mean, I know, it doesn't show on this, but there, there's two unincorporated areas north of this that currently keep us from annexing and then regulating the speed and it's.
Have we petitioned it though?
Yes.
We have?
Yes. And they've said no because it's not annexed and no because the traffics, uh, counts at that time, um, weren't there. And honestly, to this point, nothing really has changed in the traffic, traffic numbers, until this project comes online.
Yeah.
Maybe the traffic counts change a little bit from, you know, our, our neighbors to the, to the west here, but.
Well, as development comes in, I mean, with utilities coming up forty-two, development's gonna be going down forty-two, so I mean, the annexations can be potential there, so eventually we will have it in, within the.
We'll certainly have that discussion with ODOT as well about the speed limit and what that process is and how we can lower it to thirty-five. I think that's reasonable, especially when this is fully developed.
Yeah, and I don't think that that, you know, section, that whatever, the sixty percent, uh, north of the Karn property, I mean, I don't think that's gonna be the issue, it's just gonna be that lane, you know, south of that. So I mean, it'd be ideal if we just, um, are able to annex both lanes of the roadway and then we control or have at least better control of the speed i- in that area. So as you go through the annexation process, that just should be at the forefront of your mind to try, you know? I don't know the process, honestly, I just know that we've had challenges without it.
So, um, this is just kind of a, more of a general with us, with our zoning and where we're at, um, is our, our density number, making sure, you know, we're within our, our rulebook or what it is, cause, you know, we're, we're over, I mean, whatever the number is, you know, I'm just, you know, we have a regulation now that we need to follow. If we change it, you know, it's a different story, but like, you know, I'm still kind of like, hey, what's our rulebook? And I don't like cutting corners or doing this for this one or that one. So, I mean, that's just my overall concern because if, if, if everything's great, we like it, but we're, you know, forgetting what our, our code is, you know, then what happens to the next project and the next project? And I don't want that to snowball of everybody coming in, well, you, you approve this one, but not that one and not that one. So, I mean, I think that's one of my concerns is, you know, we adjust, you know, we've talked about our zoning code update, I think we had a, an adjustment of a number, um, you know, I think that would probably be close to where we're at with this one. But that's, I think that's one of my concerns, you know, it's kind of like, you know, I think if you're at, I just make up numbers, you know? Hey, if ours, ours is five point oh, we're at five point one, I think that's easy, okay, we're, we're there, but, okay, how far is too far to go with that? You know, if it's, you know, we're, ours is at five point oh and we're at fifteen, it's like, okay, well, what are we getting for such that, that huge number?
So in our discussions and our, in our draft, we're at seven.
Okay.
With mixed, full mixed use, that's commercial and residential mixed is seven.
And I know this property, um, house being proposed is a little unique with kind of having everything in it with the commercial aspect and, you know, mixed is, you know, we're, you know, I, I don't think it's really defined in our code, what, you know, with this of what you take out, what you take credit for, is it for, you know, including the commercial, not including the commercial?
Hmm.
You know, as we look at stuff, I think that's also internally something we need to, to address. And I'm not saying necessarily to, to custom fit this project, I'm just thinking, cause we're gonna have this issue possibly, you know, on other projects, just making sure that we are equally fair with, with everybody coming through and, and having that standard that's, that's followed.
Yeah, so one of our discussions was, um, as far as just proximizing location, you know, obviously this is not going to work. Some of the stents won't work well off of the state route or, you know, in, in the middle, um, somewhere, so obviously closer to town, closer to state route is where you would want to see the most stents. That was where we left off from our draft.
And I think if we do exceed anything, you know, having a very clear of why the decision would be to do it, you know, as, kind of like speeding, hey, you know, thirty-five's the speed limit, but, you know, hey, if you're doing fifty and, you know, your wife has a baby, okay, that might be a good reason to, you know, be over the limit, but, you know, just doing fifty to do fifty is not really a.
As a long-term personal officer, I would say no, that's.
But, you know, I think, you know, if we're exceeding something, you know, there definitely has to be some big value or something in there that's noted just so, you know, we, we know what, you know, the reasons why and that is not it.
So, yeah, so whatever our number is, you know, we're, 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 we're just, you know, we're in the concept now, so whatever that preliminary is for any development, I mean, as, even in our current code, I mean, the, the planning board has discretion, but I, I think definitely whatever decisions are made, whether it's under or over, um, is, yeah, justifying having a reason why, not just approving it and approving it, but having your reason and our definition why, why it's approved. That will, I think that will prevent the next person coming in wanting something similar in a different location and we, you know, and it's, it doesn't fit there.
Yeah, and I was just saying, I was just flying in today, coming over Hillier, just over that old Avery Road and Cosgrave is just, no, that doesn't look good at all, so.
You know, we've, we've been doing this a long time and I can tell you that there, and I appreciate the foresight that you guys are going through to look at some of this stuff, cause it's really important right now. I mean, you guys are in a, in a situation where you're gonna see a lot of growth in the next five, ten, fifteen years, and how does that look? You know, we, we talked about all these conservation zonings and if we just put a bunch, you know, two lots per acre, two units per acre here and had a bunch of open space and we did that all across the southern half of Plain City, developments in a span as far as you can see, I don't really see that as being conservation. When you have an opportunity to build close to the town center and you can, you know, make, you know, put some of that population there more than spreading out and saving, you know, there's areas around with Darby and some other areas that are probably more important to preserve than some other areas and, and trying to create some of that density in, in the right places, I think is, is a real, really good discussion to have. You know, we, we want to do the right thing and we want to be partners with Plain City to make sure the right things happen. And, and I really appreciate the foresight and having that discussion with Derek and I've had a lot of these discussions and I know you have internally and I think it's just an, an important thing to consider how that looks and, and what, you know, where, where the future takes you and how you want to preserve some of the surrounding areas.
Your townhome, uh, project or part of this, are those generally owner occupied?
Uh, generally, yes.
Commercial park, we're still single story over right now?
Yeah, that's correct. I, I think in the initial schematics and perspectives that we drew, they were kind of showing as two-story, but that would not be the case, it's definitely one-story.
On all the commercial that's in that, like A one, A two, A three?
Yeah.
Sections?
Yep. You know, some of the out, the out parcel, maybe it's store and a half, it could be a little taller, but there's definitely, but we're not talking about two-story buildings. You know, uh, my impression of what we're trying to, to, to end up with here is this property had a bunch of barns here that were stored into some retail facilities, you know, maybe some board and batten and, you know, it looks like an old farm that was restored into a, a community, trying to keep that rural feel, you know, Plain City.
To the south, um, do you have like that same kind of fifty-foot buffer along to the next property as well or were you closer to the property line on that?
Well, we're, as you can see, we're close to the property line, but, you know, having roads tie under the, the other portions and other sites, you kind of are limited in how you can go about achieving that border everywhere. You know, certainly connectivity is important, you, you don't want to force everybody out onto forty-two to get around to another community, you have to, to tie in with stub streets somewhere. We can certainly talk about where those connections should take place if we want them somewhere different than where we've shown them. But yes.
And I know we've had some, some new people who haven't seen here, just where all the connections are, just to probably state like, it's our zoning code that, you know, we want connection to adjacent properties, so it's not necessarily that it's a, you're planning on going right into those properties and taking them, that's just following what our, our current code is, just in case anybody were to, uh, you know, want to annex in, we have those connections built in, so not necessarily that you're going in that direction.
And i- if I might, um, this is Jamie and Trevor, they are alternate members for planning and zoning. They will be officially appointed on Monday night, uh, but if you guys have any question, you two have any questions regarding this, you will be seeing this in the preliminary and in the rezoning as well.
So, yeah, just feel free if you guys have anything to add.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll go first. But, no, really just, I know you stated already the building heights for, especially the multifamily in the, behind the, behind the commercial, is that gonna be our, is it the fifty-foot limit or something that we have currently?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty, thirty-five is our.
That's what I said, thirty-five. Well, cause I mean, for me, I'm just looking at from a little bit of the thing again, cause that commercial piece is really trying to have that, which I really do appreciate, you know, having that look of having that single story, kind of looking at, having that kind of refurbished barn or, or some sort of barn or farmhouse look to it, you know, I just was thinking like, are, are there gonna be towering apartment buildings behind those nice looking farms or something like that? Just from a look, it was like, I mean, that the heights were a little bit higher than they are two-story or something like that, it might be just nice for just from a look for it, because that's just such a, a viewpoint piece, you know, um, as you're coming on forty-two, I really think that this will be really that big. Yeah, commercial piece is gonna be a showcase for, for the town, so I just didn't know how that, that look has already been kind of talked about in the form, form of, so
Well, I mean, for reference, um, the, the apartment project just. Well, I mean, for reference, um, the, the apartment project just to the south of this building right here, on the other side of the fence line, that's approved, um, has a combination of two and three-story buildings. So, um, I, I, I think on the, on the road front and side, it's two, and then in the center, there's some three-story. So, um, I, I, maybe to your point, I, I don't know that this is gonna look out of place, um, assuming that that project goes forward, I mean, it ha- it's kind of been on hold for a little bit, um, there's been periodic movement, but I, I don't think that the three stories would be out of place because there's gonna be another one next to it. And, you know, wh- when it steps down, you know, with the two-story and the three-story, if it steps up, however you wanna look at it, um, and that's kind of one of the things that we had talked about, you know, 'cause they came in with three-story buildings all the way around and we did feel the same way of, man, that kind of just hits you, you know, pretty hard, um, you know, three-story buildings right there. And that's one of the things that we had, uh, worked with them to reduce to two stories on kind of the perimeter, um, and they came, they came to this project with the two-story kind of, um, on the perimeter, with the three-story more on the, in the inner, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's not necessarily that I'm that concerned about just doing that, it's our discussion, supposed to be, we're talking about that, because that's all.
This other thing I would add to that is, most of the residential units are thirty-five feet tall, so that's kind of, I mean, the roof height at the top of the roof is gonna be at that point. The other thought is the commercial stuff, you know, that even though the single story, it might have a twelve or fourteen-foot wall with a roof pitch that's on a fairly wide building that could reach those heights as well, so I don't think it will be, to your point, as towering behind it as you might assume it might be.
That's great. And then last thing, as, as far as like parking, you know, we talked about parking kind of on the north side of the residential units, or excuse me, the single family units, are those gonna be, are you gonna have parking along that park as well? Or anything like that, is that what they're...
So, certainly, part of the, part plan would be to have some sort of shelter house or some, some type of development within the park as well as some parking.
I said, I, I'm not really for or against parking like along there, 'cause I think it'd be nice with keeping that walkability and kind of keep the parking for anyone who doesn't live in that area, to kind of keep that more towards the, um, more towards the commercial spaces anyway, you know? If I was having a lovely home right there, I wouldn't necessarily want to be looking out and seeing people park right around my house necessarily, but, uh, I just was kind of, didn't know if that was even a shit in the plan, just that that was the one piece of parking that we really discussed here tonight, you guys may have discussed earlier.
And you're saying like those houses, uh, that are basically facing the park, they're facing north, you'd be looking right at the park and you would wanna look across your, you know, sit on your front porch and see cars stacked up parked along or in a parking lot, there's kind of what you're...
Yeah, from a property value perspective, I was thinking that that would probably decrease that or it would increase it, and I was thinking that, that would increase if it was just a beautiful park looking across the street, not necessarily looking at people's in front of my coffee bar.
You could still probably park though, 'cause like I'm, there, there would be parking on one side of the street, so people could potentially still park in front.
Like I said, I'm not for or against it, but I'm just saying, I just didn't know if that was just discussed.
Now, the, the park stuff in the middle, I know it's way early on, but is that gonna be, I guess, mowed down and kind of usable, let's say walking space, you know, kind of the whole area?
Majority of it.
Is it just gonna be, you know, grown up?
I think there'll be much, a lot of areas that will be like that, there'll probably some areas that are left natural, um, kind of a combination with the walking paths and ponds and, you know, we, we still have a lot of work on landscape plan that we can put forth that, you know, we can get more critique back from you all as to what you wanna see there, but, and, and that might delineate more of those spaces, whether it's enough or not enough, or how, how we want them to go, we're, we're open to any suggestion.
Are those typically maintained by the HOAs or is that something that gets turned over to the city?
Either or.
All right, okay.
We can have that discussion. Uh, we're honestly, you know, Dublin typically likes to take over all these open spaces and maintain them, some municipalities don't want to.
Right.
So, uh, if you guys wanna take it over and have it part of your park system, we can have that conversation. If you don't, that's fine too.
So, yes, I was applying the other day, so we're going in, I focused on the lane, but, um, it was really neat under the power lines, yeah, I'm just thinking, 'cause we're baseball season, don't have ball fields, but it was kind of neat under the, the power lines, it was more of like T-ball size, maybe softball size, but they just kind of staggered diamonds, baseball diamonds kind of along the, the power lines, I was like, well, that's kind of a unique way to add some ball fields, so...
Yeah. So, you had a line.
Yes.
You were saying that you really wanted to do minimal, it sounds like as far as Virginia, isn't that single family area?
We haven't gotten that far unfortunately, I mean, um, really need to see where things kind of play out and get further down the, in the process before we have a lot of those conversations.
And then the width of the properties are sixty feet, depth is one-twenty, one-twenty-five?
Yes.
And then you were saying that generally the townhouses are owner occupied, but it sounded like there was some hesitation at the, the rentals.
Yeah, some of them could be, I, I wouldn't say we're gonna go in and build all these as rentals, no, they're gonna be sold. I don't wanna say on record that none of, none of them could be rented, because that would be inaccurate, maybe none of them will be, I don't know.
No different than I couldn't just rent my house out tomorrow, so...
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess technically, I mean, that, that's what I'm saying, I, technically, I, there's no rule against the owner there, but generally speaking, I would want to, to sell those properties and keep a few of those rentals here and there, but that wouldn't be a tentative whole project.
Maybe same on the targeted area too, those would be individually owned, right?
Which ones?
They, the tar- they each targeted D1, those would be...
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I said, just looking at the description here, just the south end apartments, kind of especially the ones along forty-two, it looks like they're shown as twenty-four, so I assume those are probably three-story, but kind of going back to Mr. Trippis saying, just kind of that phasing back, you know, maybe just two-story initially, just so it's like, especially when you're coming up, you're not hit with a...
What units were you referring to?
The...
B2.
Along forty-two.
The, along the forty-two, the B2, just like right there, um, you know, just kind of that, that phasing back of not all of a sudden just, you know, as you're coming in, just right now, that's, you know, in theory, gonna be the entrance of coming up in the Plain City, all of a sudden seeing big three-story apartments, you know, if you kind of have just, just kind of the same thing, sort of that two-story or similar height to the, the commercial buildings up front, just as the flow, you know, that, 'cause if it's behind the roof, you know, rooftop to rooftop, you probably can't tell much of a difference as you go back. But I just kind of was looking, going, thinking of the flow you're talking about.
I think from a conceptual standpoint, you've, uh, like answered questions and you've addressed issues that we presented to you. Seems like you're, you know, working with Mr. Hutchinson to work through the issues that we've identified and, uh, what exactly are you, I know you're looking for support, right? I mean, that's why you're...
Do you agree with us tonight?
Yeah.
Well, I think generally speaking, we have a lot of work and a lot of money to spend to go forward from this point. And I know you can't say, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this if it comes in, but if there's a hard no on something, that's certainly something I, I would like to understand, or if there's some greater conceptual issue or something that we need to really attend to, it sounds to me like we're going the right direction and this is something that you're all...
Yeah, I, I don't hear any hard no's from anybody, I think that you're, uh, the only thing that you're hearing or that I've heard is, you know, be very aware or cognizant of the density issues, um, and, you know, be, um, I guess, maybe respectful of the, you know, the, the building heights as it goes from flat farmland, 'cause that's what Plain City is, to three-story buildings. I mean, that's just gonna be a hard, um, a hard, you know, a hard sell. And, you know, Mr. Harriman, you know, said that that's kind of the entrance in the Plain City and, and it will be tomorrow, and then, you know, we'll be having that same conversation, you know, for whatever properties go to the south, so, um, so I don't hear any hard no's, I, I hear constructive, uh, feedback and, um, be, be aware of density and, and try to keep working with Mr. Hutchinson and us on...
Correct.
Plan as you go forward, any differences?
I would echo, echo what you just said, and as long as like our temporary appointment, pointies, if their concerns are being shared now, that's, that's the important part, 'cause we know the conceptual and the next time you come in are the most important portions of it.
And I, I think once we have a, a full traffic study and we have a full landscape plan and we have a lot more detail to some of these things, it'll answer a lot of the questions and can, if there's any gray areas, but I think I should tie a lot of those loose ends together.
See, you're listening already, you already, you already mentioned traffic studies and landscaping buffers and...
Look, we're, it's time to get busy, from what it sounds like to me, to really get these questions finalized and, and get some documents. Our timetable now is, is really to put together a package as quickly as possible with the annexation and start both of those things concurrently and, and get moving, so...
In both lanes of forty-two.
We're gonna do our best to see how we can do that. My attorney's not here, but I have a big note written down here that, that she's...
You just haven't forgotten, that's the whole thing.
I have not forgotten about that, and, and certainly, if anything else comes up through the process, especially for you folks that haven't had a ton of time to digest this, if you wanna meet with me individually or talk to Derek and just let me know any concerns, we'll be happily, uh, happy to meet or address any concerns.
I, and I like the blend, um, I think just, I think we talked at one meeting at one point, just that the north, called the northeast, that bike path, you know, you got a couple of options, you know, 'cause the trail kind of runs up along that school property, you know, so I, I don't know whose property or who you have to, you know, so there's a couple of spots where I'm just thinking, you know, connectivity with the bike path, you know, I think that you have a couple of options.
My hope is that they're HO, I'm sure they control their HOA, I'm not sure who runs their HOA, I can find out who, who to speak with, but my guess...
You're talking about Derby Fields?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My guess is they would want connectivity to get through into the, the par- our park and up to that commercial, I mean, that would seem to reason, so, and we certainly will commit to, to make that connection however it's possible.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's important for the success, I mean, really, it comes down to, I know density is a sensitive subject, but all this commercial and the things and conveniences we wanna have and require rooftops, I mean, a grocery, as you know, they draw a circle around it and they say, how many rooftops are there? And that determines whether or not they wanna be here or not. And all those, you know, retail and commercial will work if, if there are, when there are enough rooftops, and it's not just our project, it's everybody else around it, they're coming, it's just a matter of time, but certainly that connectivity is a big piece of it. Thank you all very much for your time, really do appreciate it and it's been great to work with, with everybody here and we look forward to, to continuing on and getting this stuff to the next step. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all. All right.
Let's move on to the...
Second. Mr. Jackson, sit here.